Be abstaining for the uh.
Do you or uh.
Include.
Whatever that is, the first step. No, no big man falls out of the say.
Or something I don't know. Like a police car rolling with an ambulance. Just as for, you know, I'm not interested in that and anything going there.
U-Haul, that's one row.
Yeah, I mean, I have.
So good. Okay, because he's on front row.
Mr. Russell, you ready?
Yeah.
Mr. Weaver.
Yep.
I'd like to call tonight's meeting for Easthamfield Township Board of Supervisors to order. Tonight's meeting has been advertised to be held in person and online using Zoom with login and call information posted on our website. Tonight's video and audio is being recorded. For tonight's meeting, Robert's rules will still apply. And the meeting will be run by the chairman, who will be assisted by an employee managing the Zoom site. During the meeting, in order to offer comment, you must be recognized by the chairman. For people utilizing Zoom, you will need to use the chat function to be recognized. Text your name and your address, your request to speak will then be passed on by staff to the chairman to be recognized. Once recognized by the chairman, you will unmute your microphone. And after speaking, we would ask that you please mute your microphone. Easthamfield Township Public Comment Rules will apply for all public comment. You must be a resident or business owner in the township to speak. Must identify yourself by name and address before speaking and sign the guest log for meeting minute purposes, or follow the chat procedure already discussed for Zoom. Comment is limited to three minutes and must be about the agenda item being discussed, with the exception of public comment for any non-agenda item. No action will be taken on any non-agenda item of a non-emergency nature during public comment period for those non-agenda items. All comments should be directed to the board. And now we will move on to our first agenda item, and I would ask that you join me by rising for a moment of silence, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Now the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Our first item up for business is the Consent Agenda. Before we get started with that, I would like to table the minutes. We need to work on those and get them in a better form for our next meeting. So we're going to pull out item D of the Consent Agenda. Is there any discussion on items A, B, C, and E on the Consent Agenda?
I'm good.
Nope.
Okay. With that, is there a motion to approve consent agenda items A, B, C, and E? So, okay. Motion for Mr. Bennett, is there a second?
Second.
Second for Mr. Russell. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, motion carries four to zero. Thank you. Action items, up first, we have 350 Richardson Drive Final Plan Waivers and Modifications.
Good evening, Kevin Ember here from R2. Also here tonight is Paul Brooker, who is the Director of Engineering for Shanks Extracts. I'll keep it as a little brief summary. We were here a couple of months ago for the sketch plan for this project, and nothing much has changed since that original application. But basically, at Shanks' property at 350 Richardson Drive, they're proposing a new building addition of about sixty-three hundred square feet. That would be over a part of their existing parking lot. To offset some of the loss of parking there, we are proposing some additional kind of restripping throughout their existing parking lot and end of some of the parking rows, adding a couple spots throughout. So there's actually a net gain of one parking space. After the building addition would be constructed, we are also proposing a decrease in the overall impervious coverage on the site as there'll be some new green space added throughout the site and around the area of the building addition. So there's no new stormwater BMPs proposed either. We are requesting deferrals of additional curb and sidewalk along the property frontage of Genue's Drive and Richardson Drive. And we are also requesting the boards okay for the approach that was used for the parking for this project and to others at Shanks. This approach was discussed with the township staff early on, where basically we are looking at some other reconfiguration of parking and building additions at Shanks' other properties to the east at 351 and 451 Richardson Drive. Hopefully, 351 is just a stormwater plan for some parking improvements. 451, we hope to be back in front of the board here soon to discuss that project. But basically, since Shanks' employee demand kind of depends on where their production is at the various building, we had discussed the approach to look at the parking needs as a whole across the three properties. And the township was generally okay with that approach. We had submitted a parking study to the township engineer and the township's traffic consultant through the land development plan process, and they had no comments on those documents. So also tonight, we're just looking for, okay, that approach. Just as background, we are going to be proposing some new sidewalk along Richardson Drive between the 451 and 351 properties. That will be part of a future plan upcoming, hopefully here in the next month or so, to be in front of the board. That will allow some better pedestrian access. There's already an existing raised pedestrian crossing. You can see on the plan here right below the label for Richardson Drive that it does allow kind of employees to go from one side of the street to the other safely. There's existing signage with that, too. So we're here tonight to request the approval by the board of the planned parking and the deferrals mentioned.
Any questions or comments from the board?
None.
None here, no. Good.
I have none. Any questions or comments from the audience on this matter? Okay, Mr. Rup, if you could come up, give your name. Any other questions or comments? Okay. Hearing none, pretty straightforward. Is there a motion to approve modifications? Request one and two, subject to all staff and engineering comments. A motion for Mr. Bennett, is there a second?
Second.
Second for Mr. Weaver, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries four to zero. Thank you.
Thanks.
Motion for the final land development plan. Is there a motion to approve the final land development plan for 350 Richardson Drive Township File twenty-three dash oh one dot oh two, subject to all staff and engineering comments?
So moved.
Motion for Mr. Russell, is there a second?
Second.
Second for Mr. Weaver, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye, aye. Motion carries, sorry, motion carries four to zero. Thank you, it's always good to see a business in Easthamfield expanding, so that's good news, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Up next, twenty-nine thirty Old Tree US Boiler Sketch Plan, twenty-three dash oh eight oh one waiver preliminary plan.
Good evening, Dave Bittner here on behalf of US Boiler. So here to discuss the sketch plan that we submitted about a month ago, and then also have a request for a waiver of preliminary plan. So US Boiler owns a lot at twenty-nine thirty Old Tree Drive. It's about ten and a half acres within the enterprise zone. There's a current building, and I don't know if you have the sketch plan to bring up, but.
Working on it.
They have an existing building, it's about a hundred and twenty-six thousand square feet. They're proposing a addition to that of just over forty-five thousand square feet. Access onto the site is going to remain where it is. They're not proposing any improvements to the access or any new access points. They do have twelve existing docks, which will, they'll all remain for their truck traffic, and they're not anticipating any increase in truck traffic coming onto the site either. There will be approximately fifteen new employees, so there's about sixty-four now. I'm sorry, about forty-nine, about sixty-four total after the addition is fully built out. And they have seventy-three parking spaces on site, so they're anticipating that they'll have adequate parking with what's there now without any expansion to their parking lot. We will need to request additional sewer and water capacity because of the new employees. So once we get into land development, we'll go through that process with the Lancaster Area Sewer Authority and the city of Lancaster for water. So I mean, that's a pretty simple plan. You can see on the left-hand side, the hatched area, that's where the addition is going to be. But it's fairly straightforward, so if you have any specific questions, I'd be happy to answer it for you.
Any questions from the board?
Yes, routine.
Simple improvement, additional jobs, growth, that's great, appreciate it.
If there's no questions from the board on this, is there any comments or questions from the audience? Any on Zoom? All right, well, hearing none, is there a motion to approve the preliminary plan waiver request for twenty-nine thirty Old Tree Drive, subject to all staff engineering comments?
So moved.
A motion by Mr. Bennett, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Russell, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries four to zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Up next, we have U-Haul Resolution twenty-two-three dash twenty to amend the township's five thirty-seven plan to allow sewage retaining tanks.
So there's U-Haul representatives here, but I essentially, it's a resolution that changes our Act five thirty-seven sewer plan to allow for retaining tanks or holding tanks at that site. The site is U-Haul, it's planned on being constructed along State Road behind the Turkey Hill.
Any questions or comments on this?
Another routine request.
I have none. Any questions or comments from the audience? Anything from the applicant? Hearing none, is there a motion to adopt Resolution twenty-two-three dash twenty, which amends the township Act five thirty-seven plan to allow for retaining tanks at the U-Haul site on State Road?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Weaver, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Russell, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries four to zero. Thank you. Little Conestoga Creek Foundation.
So Mr. Schultz is here from the Little Conestoga Creek Foundation to make some requests to the board supervisors.
Oh, good evening, here I am again. My name is Jim Schultz, I'm here tonight representing the Steiman Foundation and the Little Conestoga Creek Foundation. Those foundations are sponsors of a stream improvement and walking trail project called the Little Conestoga Creek Blue Green Corridor. A significant amount of the stream improvements and the walking trail occur on properties located in Easthamfield Township. I'm here tonight because at your April nineteen twenty-twenty-three meeting, I requested and you agreed that Easthamfield Township would be the applicant for funding of the project through the Lancaster County Connects twenty-forty program. Easthamfield Township was the applicant because only municipal governments could apply for this Connects twenty-forty funding. So while the foundations are the sponsor for the overall project, in order to get the funds for the Connects twenty-forty program, we needed Easthamfield Township to be the applicant for the funding, and you agreed. I'm here tonight to request your further assistance because as part of the application for funding, we submitted, which we submitted on April, I'm sorry, on August thirty-first by Easthamfield Township as the sponsor and the foundations as the co-sponsor, we submitted that application on August the thirty-first. Our funding request was for funds to construct the walking trail on a portion of Shriner Station Road. If you see the map in front of you around all the way around, you see is, I think Diane or who, somebody's putting the cursor on there. That's the section of Shriner Station Road that would be the last section of the trail. So it would literally be that orange dotted line traveling through part land owned by Menonite Home, by a individual resident by the name of Kathy Zabata, and Easthamfield Township. The very last segment of that road is actually owned by you, the township, okay? One of the requirements of the program is that our application must have easement agreements with the property owners along the trail, along Shriner Station Road. We had already secured easement agreements with two of the property owners on Shriner Station Road, namely Kathy Zabata and Menonite Home, so we have those. They agreed through these easements to allow us to construct the trail through their properties. Those easements are being assigned to Easthamfield Townships since each Easthamfield Township is the application applicant for the twenty-forty program. Those assignments of easements have been reviewed and approved by your solicitor and your manager. The next step is to have an easement between Easthamfield Township and the Little Conestoga Creek Foundation because Easthamfield Township owns that portion, the last section of the trail, on Shriner Station Road. We provided this easement agreement to your solicitor and manager. They have approved the easement agreement in this, for this land on Easthamfield Township. So it is my understanding that the two assignment of easements and the easement agreement between Easthamfield Township and Little Conestoga Creek Foundation have been provided to you for your review prior to another meeting. These easements will keep our application competitive for approximately five hundred thousand dollars in Connects twenty-forty programming for the walking trail to be constructed along Shriner Station Road. I'm here tonight to ask you for your approval of the two assignments of easements and the easement between Easthamfield Township and Lancaster, and sorry, the Little Conestoga. So that our application can be competitive for funding for approximately five hundred thousand dollars under the Connects twenty-forty program. We know, will know around December first of this year whether we will be awarded those funds. I'm here at, to ask your approval of those easement agreements and ask you if you have any questions.
I have none. Mr. Bennett?
I have none, Jim, and I'm glad we're able to support this. At least I'm personally able to support what you're doing, you're doing a great job, and the work that you've done so far looks outstanding, so thank you.
I can't tell you enough how Cindy and others in the staff, Nate and others, have been so helpful on getting this project to the point where it is right now.
Mr. Russell, no comments?
No.
Any, any questions or comments from the audience? Mr. Rup, if you could come up to the microphone? Yes, I believe both do.
Yes.
This is a federal program, so it's federal money.
Oh, federal.
It's federal money, number one, number two, it's administered by the county. So we have to apply to the county, they administer the funds. So it's five hundred thousand dollars, and what it's going to do is build the trail on those three properties.
And the feds are paying.
The feds are paying.
Any other questions, comments? Zoom? So hearing none, I think to accomplish this, we have two motions before us. I'll read the first. Is there a motion to approve signature on agreement of easement between the Township and Little Conestoga Creek Foundation, which will create a linear park easement on property owned by the township west of Shriner Station Road?
So moved.
A motion for Mr. Bennett, is there a second?
Second.
Second for Mr. Russell, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries four to zero. Thank you. Second part of this is, is there a motion to approve the signature on the agreement of easements between the Township and Little Conestoga Creek Foundation, which will make the township a party to the Menonite Home easement and the thirteen thirty-seven Shriner Road easement? Motion for Mr. Bennett, is there a second?
Second.
Second for Mr. Weaver, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries four to zero. Thank you, and again, thank you. Up next, we have the Church and Knoll Roads Master Park Plan. Consideration of Plan C and D. Mrs. Schweitzer, can you just give us a brief recap? We went over this at the last meeting.
Sure, so Plan C and D were reviewed at the last board meeting, and it was decided that it would be a decision of, between the two plans. The Plan C is the plan that shows four baseball fields, a playground, a pavilion, walking trails, naturalized areas, a court area, and parking, and a road berm. The Plan D shows one baseball field, two pavilions, playground, walking trails, naturalized areas, and both plans also include field space for soccer or lacrosse.
And can we pull them up real quick?
Which one do you want first?
Uh, Plan C.
So I think there's some on the side of the room there, too. Plan C is the first one, and Plan D is the one furthest behind, furthest back of the room. So there, it's also a dog park on this one, dog park, four fields, court area, parking, restroom facilities, open field area, playground, a grove of trees for picnicking, meadow area in the far right corner, and of course, the berm along Knoll Road. Now, there was a notation at the last meeting that there should be a note in the plan. I did not have that done yet for potential berm along the properties, to the properties on Randy Road as well.
So that was my suggestion, as this is a concept plan, I don't want to send it back to be redone. But my thought was that the screening along Knoll Road is significant, and it's something that we have the ability to do along the east side of that property that would provide screening to the neighbors to the east. I believe it's off of Randy Road, and is it Hermosa, off the top of my head? Off of those roads, it would provide additional screening. That was the only addition I recommended for Plan C. While I liked the first plan that was submitted, I could support this plan and would be fine with it. I think at our last meeting, Mr. Russell, you were not here. I think of the board members that are here, that was our consensus. Mr. LaFever had a plan that he created that we're going to pull up here in a minute, which is similar in nature to this plan, but there were some key differences to it to consider. Obviously, he's not here this evening, and this would be the plan that he would support. So if we can pull that one up as well. So just to highlight some of the differences, I think one of the key differences between Plan C and Plan D is the parking. Plan D has the parking all along Knoll Road. I think Plan C offers a better option, and it brings the parking deep into the site that allows people with disabilities or that are elderly to get to all the amenities that would be offered in the future at this location. I like the parking, the traffic flow better in Plan C. Another difference would be that the northeast section of the park or future park is undefined at the time. In Plan C and Plan D, it's more defined, there's a few amenities there. I think the better approach is, you know, when funding's available, at that point, we can decide what that will be and define that. Just like pickleball, fifteen years ago, we would have never known there would be a demand for pickleball that's here today. We don't know what some future board's going to be faced with. And so I prefer the fact that it's not defined in Plan C. In addition, the baseball field takes up, it's only one field. We received a request from HYA that they needed multiple fields, so it really doesn't accomplish what started this conversation to begin with, in my view. So for those reasons, I'm in favor of Plan C with the notation that we would increase or continue the berm from Knoll onto the east side of the park, and I think those are the two major differences. And with that, I'll open it up to the board for any debate, comments, or questions.
Mr. Chairman, if I could just add quickly, both plans also include crosswalks at Ladderback and Signal Hill. It's really an off-site improvement, but that would be the anticipation that those crosswalks would be put in.
Thank you.
My only comment is, I think the idea is just to not, to not develop this site willy-nilly, but to, and box ourselves into something unworkable. So it can be changed as time goes on, but I think we need to kind of all agree on some kind of basic layout and then, you know, get this, get this off a dead center and start. Need to pick a decision and move on with it. We have looked at this for quite a few months, I think, almost a year now. So, that's all I got.
Okay, Mr. Bennett?
Okay, a couple of comments. First of all, I'd like to thank David Miller Associates, the staff, and in particular Brett Deder, for the work that they've done on this project. All of the plans, all the different plans that we've had, they've done a great job for us. I'd also like to thank Cindy and Diane and Nate and their staff for the work they did, particularly on the charrette and all that went into the charrette and all, and everything that's been done to gain public input. And I think we've gotten a lot of that here. I also like to thank the public in, the public out there for their input. I'm hopeful that as we sort of put the key in and turn the engine and get it to crank, we'll be moving this project down the line, and we're going to hopefully do that with input from everyone in the community. That's very important. So I'd like to, I'd like to thank the community in general. It should come as no surprise to anyone, I think, at this point, that I'm in, I'm in favor of Plan C, and we'll vote accordingly. Thank you.
So with that, we'll turn it over to public comment for any comments or questions. I will start on the left side of the room. Is there anyone here on the left side that has something they wish to comment or questions about what we're talking about? Okay, in the back row, if you could come up and state your name, please. I'm sorry, I should have said my left.
Please also ensure that if you address the board, that you also sign in legibly so that we have your information for the minutes.
I had, Betsy Bauer, eleven thirteen Old Eagle Road. It's no surprise that I've been against this. I'm going to have, bring up two questions. How are you going to pay for this new park? The last figure that I heard that the park would cost seven point five million. And what is going to happen to the seven to nine baseball fields within the Easthamfield Township that are now being used? Are they just going to go away? Or, you know, maybe they need a little upgrading, and that we're going to lose the income from the Hummer sod farm?
Okay, so I'm going to address, I can't address question number two for you because we don't run the baseball fields, but I can address question number one for you. So I don't know how much more clear we could have been when it comes to payment and funding of this. We have told everybody, including HYA, every resident, almost at every meeting that has come here, that we are not funding this project, that this project will be a community-led project, it will be community-funded, and it will not be funded with taxpayer dollars. It'll be very similar to the Dream Park. The Dream Park that's right out front here that was built significantly. The Dream Park that's right out front here that was built, significant amount of money went into that. That was not taxpayer money. It was all publicly funded from different community groups, and it was raised money. And the same thing will be here. This will not be built tomorrow. This will be built over many, many years. So to answer your question, how are we going to pay for it? It's going to be community-led, and it's going to be funded from outside resources. In regards to question number two regarding the other baseball fields, that's not, that's not in our purview, and we just don't have an answer for you on that.
Well, there are some within East Hemfield, but then there are some like Silver Spring, Mountville, East Petersburg, that they do use their fields. But are they going to go by the wayside, or are they going to improve?
Bennett from Parks and Rec, do you have something?
Well, I can tell you, I don't have all the details, but I can tell you right now that HYA is on an aggressive program to upgrade many of the fields that they're using right now. They're going to continue to use all available fields that are currently available, and they need more fields for play. So they're, they are putting a lot of money in the fields that are there now and improving those. So they're not neglecting them, and they're, they're going to continue to use them from what I, from what I understand. Okay?
Thank you. Do we have any other questions on my left side of the room? Ms. Jacobs? And can we put Plan C up? I think that's, yeah, that's Plan C. Can you come to the microphone? We just?
Holly Jacobson, 2009 Chapel Ford Drive.
Mrs. Jacobson, I hate to do this. Can you take them, you can take the microphone with you over there?
The egress is longer from the road to the parking area because I'm sure there's going to be backup to get into the parking area. So it gives the drivers more space, and it gives the road more accessibility to people that aren't going to the park. And it brings the parking away from the houses because, you know, people can park there, and they can leave at 11 o'clock at night or whatever, and the lights are shining in these people's houses when they put their, when they start their cars. So I like that. Plus, it's closer to the activities for people to walk and see the, sit in their car and watch the activities actually, too. I know when I moved here 31 years ago, I know that that was going to change at some point because we got the heads up, don't buy a house near open land. And so we bought it on Centerville Road. So, but anyway. I just, I think it's, I think it's a good idea for the kids. And my daughter's 27, so she's not involved in that now. But that puts, that's what brings families together. And the township, the way the township is with, with the type of people we have here, you know, I think there's going to be a lot of people that are going to step forward to help maintain it because it's a good lesson for kids to, to see that their parents are involved and, and all that. Now, again, I don't live near it, so I'm not affected from the volume of, of the cars. But that's my, that's my vote. I vote for the one with the, that parking situation.
Thank you. Ms. Garber, can we get that up?
I'm sorry, I thought it was up. There you go.
Thanks. Okay, we're going to move on to my right side of the room. We'll go in the first row. If you can come to the microphone, I'm sorry, Chris.
I'm Chris Hausner. I live at 3299 Randy Road. And my first question, Mr. Wigglesworth, you sort of, with the discussion about funding, my question was, what is it that you're voting on tonight? You are not voting to appropriate funds to do anything, are you?
Correct. And honestly, I think what's happened is, you know, unfortunately, some rumors got spread. This is simply a concept plan. And again, you know, how we got to where we are, a brief recap is that HYA approached us about the need for some ball fields. You know, we explained to them, we don't, you know, we don't have the money, but we have space. And, you know, here's where our space is. And then we thought about it, you know, and it was, it was time for us to put together a concept plan. Where are their fields going to go? The whole entire site's not going to be baseball fields. So, you know, before we got started, we need to give them, you know, some direction. So that's how we got here. And again, this is a concept plan. It's going to change many times.
And the other question I had was, I think the other plan, which was Plan D, had two fields, they were just called sports fields, which I think of maybe, I don't know, soccer or even lacrosse.
Soccer, lacrosse, field hockey, what have you.
That this, this one does not have. So was there some kind of determination made that there's no demand, there's no demand for those type of sports fields, or?
Currently, we have not had a request for those type of sports fields. And again, it, you know, we don't know what the future holds with as far as popularity of different sports, you know, what's going to be appropriate. And maybe this will be some meadow in the future. I don't know. But I think the bottom line is it won't be this board that decides what that's going to be. It's going to be a future board, and that's what I like about it.
Okay. So this is the one you're going with, like, right now? Because you think that, given all the study that's been, and all the input you've received, you feel as though this is probably the best concept, but it's still that, just a concept. It's not going to be, and, and you're going to wait until somebody else comes across with some funding before you really proceed with this concept?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, anyone else on the, in the next row?
Patty Clark, 3337 Cochran Drive. I just had a question about funding. I know you've been very clear about the township not funding to build the park at all. But would you anticipate down the road and maybe using the park out here as a model that eventually the township would be funding to maintain the park in terms of, you know, staff to maintain the grounds and equipment and everything like that? Would that be an expectation based on what's, what's out here?
I think it would be very similar to the park that we have now. There's certain amenities that fund themselves. There's certain amenities, for example, the walking trail, which, you know, we're responsible for. You know, once we put it in, we're going to be responsible for it. But as far as baseball fields and sports fields, that's not something that we've taken on, and I don't believe we will in the future.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Craig Denlinger, 3465 Knoll Road. To start, I'm in complete support of the plan. I had mentioned at an earlier meeting about the potential for speed tables on Knoll Road. I, technically, it's probably not part of the plan, but just kind of want to keep that on the table as a possibility just due to speed and the increased traffic there.
Mrs. Switzer, those are raised crosswalks?
Raised crosswalks, essentially the same thing.
And we also have the ability to put up temporary speedhomes to evaluate if we need to.
And are we able to show the berm again? I know we showed up at the last meeting. Is that something that we could?
Give me one second.
So there were significant changes from the main, the plan that was first introduced to the one we have now. There's a lot of similarities to the one that we have now. But I just want to highlight that we did hear the residents that live across from Knoll Road and also live east of the park. And we tried to incorporate it, the design, to address as many of those concerns in the concept plan as possible. So I just wanted to throw that out there. And I do think that that if we can get the berm up, it's a good, it's very aesthetically pleasing. And I think it would be, you know, amenity to the neighbors that would be to the east if we continue that berm around. Sorry to put you guys on the spot.
They came through the last time.
And if it's something that looks like it's going to take some time, I think we can maybe move on and come back to it.
Great, doesn't it?
Yeah, that's, there we go. So again, I think if we continue that onto the east side of the park, that buffering, again, I think that, you know, it's a very aesthetically pleasing buffer. And I think it also serves to accomplish a lot of what the complaints were as far as noise buffering, light buffering. You know, I think, you know, it's a big part of it. In addition, Mrs. Switzer, you had a comment on a couple of the other key differences. I don't know if you have those handy. I know.
The difference between C and D?
No, the difference between the initial plan and C.
The plan C. The meadow area has been increased, more passive area. We purposely moved the activities away from Randy Road and the homeowners. The center of the ball field no longer has a broadcasting area. It's now a flagpole. The, the maintenance building that's in the, just before the circle there now is a restroom. It's a little closer to the ball fields and the playground to facilitate that movement. We have now a picnic row, which we didn't have before, which is a group of trees there towards the berm. I think the trails in general have increased. I think there's just over two miles of trails on this track of land.
Versus the, versus the original plan, we have, we actually moved the baseball fields as they're depicted on here away from the property line on, on Knoll Road to add additional distance.
The park's also dusted on like all the rest of our parks.
Yes.
And, and the original plan had, had, had lights on it. Plan now doesn't. So, you know, we sort of responded, I think, to some of the concerns residents had about lighting.
All right. Do we have any more questions or comments from the audience?
Good evening, all. Jay Enoch, Hemfield Youth Association. I know it wasn't a direct comment to HYA, but I can answer the question. We currently have 18 fields in our inventory for both baseball and softball across the school district. We regularly maintain them. And in the last six months and future 12 months, we will invest probably close to $175,000 to either improve them or upkeep them. I just want to say thank you. I appreciate the time, energy, effort from everybody involved. I think the first initial conversations we had were probably a year, year and a half ago. And I know it's taken a lot of time and a lot of energy to get to this point. So from, on behalf of HYA, we appreciate the consideration. To Mr. Bennett's point, I will tell you, we just closed our fall registration. We have over 600 kids participating in our fall sports. And that is softball, that is baseball, that is soccer. Year over year, in baseball and softball alone, we saw an increase of 131 kids. And that does not include the number of kids that are involved in Mountville's program. So all in total, we typically have in the school district, just between Mountville and Hemfield, probably close to 2,000 kids that are participating in new sports. So this, this site plan, this concept plan will definitely get plenty of use within the community. And I think studies have shown, and everybody will tell you, that the more active kids are, the more, the better they do in education as well. So I think there's benefits across the board to this concept plan for the community. And the great thing is, just driving in today, I saw the activity at the pickleball courts and the bocce courts and even the playground. And I think that just furthers the community connection with something like this. So thank you.
Thank you. And again, we, and again, we want to thank, as a board, the HYA organization. You guys do a great job. And we're glad to support you. Is there any other comments here? Any comments online?
No one on Zoom has indicated a desire to comment.
Okay. All right. Well, then, hearing none, I think it's time to, as Mr. Weaver said, make a decision and move forward here. So is there a motion to accept Plan C, which has been discussed and outlined, creating the Church and Knoll Road Master Park Plan? A motion for Mr. Bennett is there, second? Second for Mr. Weaver. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Imposed. Motion carries four to zero. Thank you. Up next, A. Her Park Phase Two Project bids.
So A. Mr. Park improvements Phase Two involves a new bocce court, a parking facility, some stormwater facilities, and a second pavilion on the other side of the park near the playground. We have received a DCNR grant for 50% of the cost. And we moved forward and had bidding taken care of. Unfortunately, the bids, we had five bidders. They came in high, higher than we projected. The low bidder was Kinsley Construction at 583,000. We're requesting the board to reject all bids. We're going to start over almost. We have a meeting with Keystone Purchasing Network today. It's a group similar to Co-Stars. We don't have to rebid. We simply give them the information. They give us a quote. They've been already vetted. We're going to see how that works for us, at least for the pavilions. Because we did purchase the pavilion materials. They're sitting in our parking lot. So we want those up and out of the ground, in the ground before the winter months. And then we might, depending on the cost, look at the parking lot and stormwater work for 2024 budget. So I'm looking for a rejection of bids.
What was the engineer's estimate?
The engineer's estimate was over two years old. It came in at 380,000. Yeah.
It was from, it was from 20. Was it 21?
Twenty or 21.
Our concern is just with inflation and everything that has happened, and as long as it took to get an MPDS permit, we just got on the wrong side of pricing a little bit, so.
So what's the thought to, obviously, we're going to rate size or something at this point. What's the thought for the plan?
We've reached out to DCNR to see if there's any additional funding sources. We've already purchased the pavilions, which is the bocce court and the pavilion, so those have to go up. It's the parking lot and the stormwater. Stormwater has to go into a certain extent. So that would be the next, next option after we get the quotes from KPM.
The way the project lays out, you can sort of separate the bocce courts and the pavilion and their stormwater from the parking lot over on this side, and it's stormwater. So I think you can sort of separate the project. over on this side and its stormwater. So I think you can sort of separate the project that way and be able to move forward.
So basically right size by taking those things out and then go forward with the grant money?
We'll do, do the pavilion, do the bocce court and the storm where that goes with that. And then look, we already spoke to two representatives from D C and R about some additional funding and they gave us some direction. So we're going to try and see what can be done there to help get that to finish up the rest of the project.
All right. Well, I greatly appreciate you guys thinking outside the box and not just coming to us with the low bid and saying this is what it is. So I appreciate that approach. And I would be in favor of vacating the bids. Is there any other discussion on this? Is there any questions or comments from the audience on this matter? Any from Zoom? Hearing none? Is there a motion to reject all bids for the A. Her Park Phase Two project? Motion for Mr. Bennett is there, second?
Second.
Second for Mr. Russell. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries four to zero. Up next, special event, closure of Florrie Mill Road before the Sheets filming.
So as you're aware, we have a brand new Sheets nearly completed at the intersection of Florrie Mill Road and Roarstown Road. As a part of the completion of that building, Sheets through Make Films, which is a locally owned filming company, has requested to shut down a portion of Florrie Mill Road in East Hemfield Township to film a twenty twenty-three year end promotional video utilizing live actors and live vehicles to promote what they have accomplished this year, including the completion of the Sheets here in East Hemfield Township. The original application made obvious that it, while it was solely a closure in East Hemfield Township, does create impacts for Manheim Township. So through the process, Manheim Township administration, as well as the police department, staff, and also Chief Brubaker have worked with the filming company. And what we come with you tonight is a request to close Florrie Mill Road. It is the portion of Florrie Mill Road from Roarstown Road to Commerce Drive. However, it will remain open for the businesses that are impacted in between there Friday night, August eighteenth, from six P M to six A M. Now, that is the most drastic time expectation is that it will be shorter than that. It will be a full closure with appropriate road signage provided by T N W Traffic Control. They have submitted a traffic control plan that's been reviewed both on our side and on Manheim Township side and found to be acceptable. As T N W is familiar with all of the PennDOT regulations as well as township regulations. So it would be staff's recommendation that you approve the request from Sheets and Make Films to close Florrie Mill Road Friday, August eighteenth, from six P M to six A M with a rain date of Saturday, August nineteenth. Same timeline for the filming of the Sheets twenty twenty-three year end video. And to allow the chair to sign the roadway indemnification form provided by Make Films and Sheets.
Any questions, comments on this? Any questions or comments on this from the audience? Yes, ma'am.
Patty Clark, thirty-three, thirty-seven Cochran Drive. Just out of curiosity, so the plan, would the plan for the event include like detour signs being put up?
Yes.
And how, how extensive would that be?
They go all the way out to Route seventy-two on both Florrie Mill Road and Commerce Drive and up and down Roarstown Road.
Any other questions? Any questions, comments from Zoom? Okay, hearing none. Is there a motion to allow Sheets Incorporated care of Make Films to close Florrie Mill Road between the hours of six P M and six A M on August eighteenth, twenty twenty-three, with a rain date of August nineteenth, twenty twenty-three? And authorize the chairman to sign the indemnification agreement regarding roadway impacts for the event?
Submove.
Motion for Mr. Russell is there, second?
Second.
Second for Mr. Weaver. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries four to zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
Old Roarstown Road, T R C Engineers Incorporated supplemental funding for inspection services.
So the old Roarstown Road Bridge project is still struggling with utility and railroad issues. T R C Engineers is the inspection service that is handling inspections at the site. And because of the delays that have occurred, they need additional funding. And this supplement gives them additional eighty-two thousand five hundred and seventy dollars, of which East Hemfield Township will be responsible for two point five percent, about two thousand dollars.
I mean, this is pretty, not surprising. So we gotta prove it.
I mean, yeah, the fact that we're still talking about is frustrating, but I don't know what else to do.
Unbelievable.
No, this is typical PennDOT work.
I know, but it's just unbelievable. The drone's on like this.
Any other productive comments on this? Okay. Any questions or comments from the audience? Any from Zoom? Hearing none, is there a motion to authorize the approval of supplemental, number one, to the T R C Engineers Incorporated Inspection Agreement for the old Roarstown Road Bridge Project?
Submove.
Motion for Mr. Russell is there, second?
Second.
Second for Mr. Bennett. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries four to zero. Thank you. Recreation Authority waiver modification of use by Blue Collar?
The past few meet, no, a couple of meetings ago, you were asked to approve some events that Blue Collar was having outside of the leased area of Four Seasons. Those were approved. The sublease with the Rec Authority requires that the Rec Authority and the Board of Supervisors sign off on, on anything that's outside of the lease. To facilitate these events in the future, which the Recreation Authority supports, I developed a form, very basic, that lists event forms for them that they fill out. It needs to be signed by the general manager and also the township manager. Because we're the two that need to be aware of what's going on. And therefore, what I'm asking the board to do is to waive their rights of knowledge on this. I mean, I can certainly put that in my report as the events occur. But this would allow them to start their planning process a bit earlier.
I'm fine with that. I have no issue.
Seems to streamline things a little bit, or a lot, maybe.
It's, it's exactly what's, and just, just to be clear, they want to have events on property that we own outside of what they actually lease. So this gives them the permission to do that. And it's an ongoing permission versus a one-time permission.
And just to clarify that, it still gets reviewed. It's just by staff. And they don't have to wait for us for a month to come before us to get the approval. So I'm fine with it. Are there any questions or comments from the audience?
Township calling Jacobson two zero zero nine. Apple Forge, are we going to be named as a, an additional insured for these events?
Yes.
That we don't have to get event insurance?
A certificate of insurance is required for the form.
Any other questions or comments? Any questions or comments from Zoom? Hearing none, is there a motion to approve the conduct of special events on property leased to the Rec Authority on the condition that the event sponsor submits a qualifying application, which is acceptable to the Rec Authority and approved by the township manager and Rec Authority's golf general manager? Okay, motion for Mr. Bennett is there, second? I tell you what, let's, okay. At this point, we're in the middle of the motion and I'm sorry. So we have a motion for Mr. Bennett is
Second.
Second for Mr. Russell. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries four to zero. Mrs. Jacobson, you can come back.
Jacobson two zero nine Chapel Forest Drive, the alcohol part of the certificate on township property. I know it's in the building, but once it's, it's served outside the building on our property, is that included in the certificate of insurance too? Yes, okay.
Yeah.
That's just my, that's just my question.
It, it's their license and their liability. Yes.
Okay.
It's not, no longer the townships.
Right.
Old businesses, is there any old business to be discussed tonight? Hearing none, any new business? Traffic Commission report. We had a traffic commission this evening. And we discussed two main items. One, we, we, we've identified a speeding problem on Nissley Road. The chief is on top of it. And we're going to use enforcement and education at this point to try to solve that problem. There was also a return visitor and some additional neighbors that came out to discuss the twenty-two hundred block of Marietta Avenue in Roarstown, where they've had some accidents. They have concerns over speed and inattentive driving. We've called for a meeting with PennDOT to discuss that, and that's scheduled for the end of August. And we've asked the neighbors to be patient with us while we work through this issue with PennDOT. More to come. Public comment? Is there any public comment related to any items that weren't discussed this evening? Anything from Zoom? Managers report?
So along with old Roarstown Road Bridge Project, Central Road Project is also experiencing the same kind of utility delays. To the extent that the project has now been extended in completion date of twenty twenty-six as opposed to twenty twenty-five. The Church Street paving project, if it, it was announced at the Traffic Commission meeting, that roadway has been opened this evening, which is just ahead of school starting, I think, on the twenty-second. So that's good news.
That's great news.
I talked to the, and I'm sorry, Farmingdale Road. The mast arms are expected to be arriving at, on the twenty-fifth of August. It's going to take a few weeks, but those should be then erected on the sites that have already been prepared for those mast arms. So that should go very quickly once they start. The truck study is anticipated to be at our September twentieth Traffic Commission meeting and then the Board of Supervisors meeting. We talked about Marietta, Stony Battery Trail. I still have two outstanding issues. And it's a kind of a theme tonight. The wires are still in those poles. So that's a utility issue that we're waiting for. The T E connectivity easement, I'm still waiting. They had to send that to corporate for review. So that has not been returned. We talked about the A. Her Park phasing. We talked about the Little Conestoga Creek Foundation. Noldorick Park. I'm still waiting for the agreement from the Little Conestoga Creek regarding the expansion of the parking area and the trailhead. So that's still on hold. We did have a meeting of the M S Four Group, which also talked about stormwater. So your stormwater project list has received some updates. In fact, number nine is a new project. It's at the, between Stony Battery Road and Hemfield School District along the Swar Run. We're projecting a potential stream bank restoration project there. We developed this list in anticipation of having a meeting with the Clean Water Partners, which I think is soon, maybe tomorrow, to talk to them about funding sources and what we can do. So we wanted to get our ducks in a row. We've done that. We'll have that meeting to see if they have any money. They are, they got a NIFWIF grant that they're trying to get rid of. So hopefully we can get some funding for some of these projects. I also attended the L A M C meeting on the ninth. We talked about controlling our rights away. And we also talked about a countywide salary survey. Of note, we are having new representative at the county planning level. Alex Werbach has moved on and we now have a Christine Lee, I believe her name is, is our new representative. Includes my report unless you have questions.
I have none. Mr. Bennett?
I'm good. Thank you.
Okay, one more time for the good of the order. Is there anything else to be discussed here this evening? Hearing nothing, we're going to adjourn our meeting at eight oh five P M. We want to thank everyone that has come out. Thank you.